We get started here. I think we've got a full agenda. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending our workshop Monday, May 24th. And I think we have a full agenda here, so let's get started. Item one, Economic Development Developer Recommendations with Seventh and Grand Parking Garage redevelopment. And we have Mr. Anderson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Matt Anderson, City Manager's Office. I have two items on the agenda. They're kind of put together in one presentation. So I'll just blow right into that second item on your agenda. On tonight's council meeting, we have two developer recommendations for you. The first is the Seventh and Grand Parking Garage replacement. And the second is 420 Court Avenue, which is the south side of Court between Ford and Fifth. Both actions, select a preferred developer team. And what you're going to see are not final products, not final projects. There's a lot of design work yet to do, a lot of urban planning work yet to do. And we will ask you tonight to direct those projects and staff to the appropriate boards and commissions, particularly the Urban Design Review Board and city planning staff as we work through the finals of the design and then through the finances of both projects and then through the urban renewal land disposition process. So tonight, there are no formal actions, no formal financial commitments required by the city council, but more just a step in the process of moving us forward. And then we expect, they'll come at different times, but within the next six months, we'll be bringing both of them to you for final approval. I'm going to, because council members, Voss and Gray were not here at the beginning of the process when we started the Seventh and Grand Parking Garage, I just wanted to go back to the process that we've been on for the last few months. It's been estimated by engineering that 2019 is the end of that garage's useful life. You'll hit a point where it just doesn't make sense to keep putting improvements into the garage structurally. The return on investment won't be there. Principal's plan improvements for Seven Eleven High, their big $238 million rehab of their three first buildings, included raising the Skywalk to the third level. Right now, it connects to that parking garage at the second level. So when we approved the development agreement for the Principal Financial Campus, we asked the council to consider accelerating the demolition and reconstruction of that garage a few years to match Principal's timeline since that Skywalk change needs to be made. So we came up with a process that we developed an RFP. We issued, actually, we issued an RFQ, Request for Qualifications. And then an RFP narrowed the list from, I think, five developers to three and then to two. So this is our timeline. 2017 is the estimated completion of Principal's project, so we wanted to match that so that the Skywalk construction could go smoothly. We originally moved forward out of the RFQ process with teams led by Hubble, the Opus Group and Ryan Companies. Those were who the council directed us to send, move forward in the RFP process. Then not moving forward was a group led by Baker Group and Oppiden out of the Twin Cities. We went through, there were two proposals received. One from a team comprised of Hubble, Whites and BNIM. And a second one by the Opus Group. At the RFP round, the Opus Group added Sherman Associates, who we've done many projects with in the city of Des Moines, as their housing lead on the project, and ESG Architects and Confluence Confluence locally. That's Brian Clark's group. Most of you know Brian. So a quick glance at the two proposals and what we got. From the Hubble Realty Company team, a very strong team with a proven track record of Des Moines projects. 122 market rate units. We've seen a real shift in the market. What developers are showing us, market rate units versus affordable units. It's been a great trend. Commercial space. We requested parking to replace the parking that's currently there. That's what our parking study tells us needs to be done. And to meet the needs of the office users in that area and the Marriott. And plus, we requested that developers provide any additional parking that may be driven by the demand of theirs. So in this case, particularly those residential units or that commercial space, if they require certain parking spaces, they need to be incorporated in there also. Hubble's was a total project cost around $50 million. A housing gap that was really difficult for us to close. Over $6 million gap on those 122 market rate units. And it got really difficult, and we sat down with our team and studied that. The Sherman Associates and Opus Group, a strong team with many similar projects. Both developers very active in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. And obviously Sherman's done a number of projects in Des Moines, both new construction and rehab. 104 market rate units, a little over 12,000 square feet of commercial space. Their commercial space is both on the parking garage side at the Skywalk level and at the ground level, and then a little bit of commercial space in the residential building. You've got almost 800 parking spaces, including 86 below grade for the apartments. This team proposed an optional 125-room extended stay hotel. We can talk about that in more detail. The optional part of it was because there was a pretty big financial gap associated with that hotel. And if it can't be filled, we won't move forward with the hotel. But we've asked the developer already to provide a third-party market study to demonstrate the feasibility of that product. We're doing a lot of hotel work already right now because of the event center hotel work that we're doing as we prepare for that project. And most of the hotel consultants, all of the hotel consultants we talked to feel very comfortable with a more extended stay product, particularly Skywalk Connected to serve the corporate market. We don't have a lot of extended stay right now, but it's starting to come on. We've got a Residence Inn just opened on the river. We've got a Homewood Suites that was proposed in the East Village. So we want to make sure that we don't suddenly put too many extended stay units, rooms in the market. We want to be comfortable that we're not overbuilding that. So we've requested that market study and we'll have it shortly. In the meantime, what Opus is doing is contacting the large corporate users downtown who do drive a lot of room night stays, both with their consultants and with out-of-state and international employees who come in for training and meetings. So we're going to move cautiously on that hotel and try to close that gap with Opus. We have about a $71 million project with the hotel included in there. Approximately a million dollar subsidy required for the housing. And I'm going to get to, I'll do it now. Part of the reason you see a such a different subsidy in the housing for the two teams was the approach that they took. Both provided market studies demonstrating the rents that they were going after. And the Hubble market study did a wide spectrum of the market and determined what the average rent was in the marketplace and delivered a product at that average rent. That average rent in the low $1.30 a square foot doesn't drive enough debt to build a project in this location, resulting in this over $6 million gap. The Opus team produced a market study that really focused on the higher end of the market, showing much higher rents at that spectrum. And with those higher rents, you've got to deliver something for those higher rents. So Skywalk Connected, underground parking, a higher amenity level, higher finish level, a little bit smaller units, so the square foot rent goes up. But the actual rent, the check that you write every month, stays within reason of some of those products that they compared themselves to, mainly Ingersoll Square, Gateway Loss, some of the nicer, higher-end market rate projects that are coming on the market. So we, as staff, looked at that and thought, well, there's a product that we think we can, there's a demand for. It's not being delivered in enough quantity. And it hits people who are looking for, it's not the 24-year-olds out of college who are looking for an efficient studio apartment. There's a market for that, too. But this is more of the renters by choice, people who have a choice. They could buy a house or a condo, or they could choose to rent. We seem to run into that a lot here. You've got people at Meredith or at the hospitals who are here on a two-year assignment and want to rent an apartment. And they don't want to live in a small, in kind of their college apartment. They want something nicer. And so this is something that we think is a market we can hit and there's a demand for. That hotel, as I mentioned, had a pretty large subsidy needed. The strategy, Opus' strategy in going and talking to the corporate users and trying to lock down some corporate nights, basically room blocks, some guarantees to understand that demand. If you have that demand up front and know it up front, you can reduce your risk going in. And that risk can hopefully, that lessened risk can result in a lower hotel subsidy. Obviously, I'm not going to come to you and ask you to put $7.5 million into a 125-room hotel. So give us some time to work on that. Let us understand the market with the development team. The project survives just fine without it. It's a very good-looking project without it. And it fits the marketplace well if we have to carve that out. So I just asked for a couple of months as we work forward on design issues to also be kind of a parallel track to be working on that hotel issue. So our recommendation is the Opus Group and Sherman Associates. We thought they articulated a clear vision for the site. The housing amenities and market niche stretched the market without taking undue risks. They weren't coming in saying, "We think you can charge $3,000 or $4,000 a month for the apartments." We think that they're at the high end. But there is a high-end market here in Des Moines that's not being met. The retail and courtyard space on the East Block really engaged the public and enlivened Seventh Street. Seventh Street, we've all forgotten about for the last 40 years because it's a tunnel. The way that garage kind of hangs over there and it's dark and dreary. They really did a good job of bringing Seventh Street back to life. And the hotel option is appealing, but we're going to work on trying to get that gap narrowed. Now, design and architecture are going to evolve greatly over the next few months. Here's a, I'm going to give you a couple of images of the proposal. You can see 801 Grand. This is a very difficult site to develop around. You have the tallest building in the state to the west. You have the Catholic Diocese, which is a local landmark to the east. You have the cathedral, the Catholic Cathedral, to the north. And you have the architecture of the Rouen Tower in their Cortin Steel to the south. And you're playing with a lot of different architectural styles there. And how do you get this project to blend and feel like it belongs there? So that's going to change over time. Urban Design Review Board and the planning staff will play a big role in that and exactly how that design carries out. From an urban planning standpoint, ESG is the architect who will master plan the site. ESG is very good at this. They're Minneapolis-based. And we kind of look at Minneapolis for design cues, similar climate, similar debt growing downtown, Skywalk system in Minneapolis. So they know how to work in there. I encourage you to go to ESG's website and look at their product. It's very, very well thought out. And then also from that street engagement standpoint, Confluence, Brian Clark's team is part of this team. Again, a very good team that knows Des Moines really well and can help us integrate the Skywalks and all those difficult-to-work-through design cues that we're kind of pushing and pulling with all the different architecture in the area. You can see, we're really highlighting the Skywalk, vertical access with a lot of glass and light, something that if you go there today, it doesn't do a very good job of it, obviously. But we think we can have a lot of fun with that architecture. And then there's that Seventh Street. This probably doesn't do it justice on your screen. Bringing Seventh Street back to life, that little courtyard area and kind of the U-shaped space there for people to kind of engage the street again. Before I move on.
Can we ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Can you go back to the slide map that had the two comparisons?
Yes.
Please, thank you. Okay. On the Opus, Sherman Associates, a couple of questions. What would the actual cost be if they're not going forward with the hotel?
I think that was also right in that $50 million range. I don't think--
So the $71 million? Does not include the hotel?
Seventy-one included the hotel.
It includes the hotel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, drop in, it'd be in the 50s if they didn't do the hotel.
I thought you were saying it was 50.
No.
Okay, so then another question would be the parking here. Can you talk a little bit about the parking garage on both of the proposals? Because is that, obviously, that's a key component for the city as well. Could you go into that a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, the garages were very similar. They had different-- Jeb and Jennifer were part of our review team, so I didn't want to be the one who was picking which parking garage we were going to put in the system. So they were a key part of that. We had our, we had the city engineering office look at the garage proposals and also the garage cost proposals, and we costed out our own ramp. Councilman Coleman, I think you asked us to do that months ago when we started this process, and we've done that. The ramp, the ramps, as presented by both teams, were within reason for cost. I mean, obviously, they haven't been bid and fully designed. But in the parking ramp construction industry, there's a standard cost per stall that once you know what local labor and materials are at, you can pretty well guess within a range. And it's in that $20,000 to $22,000 per space range that it costs to build a ramp. These fell within that. So, and then there was the, you've been in different garages that you circulate vertically in different ways. We have them in the city. We have two or three different ways to get up and down, and some are more frustrating than others. And Jeb, I don't remember exactly, but there was the design of the Hubble ramp, which Walker Parking did. And Walker's is very good. It was a design that wasn't our favorite for the consumer's experience of cycling up and down. The ramp physically on the Opus team was a little more intuitive, a little easier to get up and down. And then we'll work with, ultimately, the city will own the ramp likely through a lease-purchase agreement, like we did the Ninth and Mulberry ramp with EMC. Again, that's one of those big things that we will have a sub-team working on while one team's working on design and urban planning issues through the boards. We'll have another team that's engineering and finance and legal trying to work with their people to figure out exactly the best ownership structure to recommend to you for the garage.
Last comment. As we look at the housing of both of these, and I did talk with the city manager yesterday about this and would like to have some discussion about this before we actually vote on it tonight. And that would be, what are some key benchmarks as we go through this process to ensure that there's no slippage between the Opus proposal and the Hubble proposal? I mean, you know, they're very similar in what they're bringing forward. You talked about the average rent per unit. And as I look at this, and you confirmed it, the real difference here is the assumptions they made on the rent. So if that were to change, because now that they're going out to getting financing and putting all the pieces together, and they say, "Come back and say, you know what? We're not going to be able to go that route. We're going to have to downscale it." To me, that would be a nonstarter, and I couldn't support it.
Overpromise and underdeliver is something we're going to work hard to avoid.
You need to come back, I need to have some specifics as to how do we ensure when we start today and get to the finish line that we've got different avenues along the way that we're going to, say, do checks to make sure that it's still the same project we started out with?
We can do that.
Thank you.
If I just add to that, Christine, councilmembers, I think Matt said it really well. I get your point, and I think when you act on it tonight, should you want to go with the staff recommendation, we'll try to identify some benchmarks, as you call them, so that when we go forward, it's very clear what the expectations are when the project comes back to you. And it's not just financing, but I think it's design issues as well and sort of what you're getting for your investment here. So I get that point, and I think it's appropriate. And now's the time to raise it. You're at the very front end of this. You've got a lot of steps to go through. It'll be back in front of you on numerous occasions. So we want to make sure that we do that appropriately and that you have an opportunity at this early stage in the process to articulate what it is your points are that you think you want to make sure the developer sticks to as we go through it.
Matt, didn't you say early on you had a couple other boards that this has to go through also? So you could run into some problems there, and hopefully they're all solvable.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, you've got a lot of Skywalk issues that we need to sort through here. I assume the garage will need to go through the Access Advisory Board. Urban Design Review Board will play a really big role.
Matt, similar question to Christine's. The unknown is what the contract or ultimate arrangement is for this to become part of our parking system. How do you picture that happening? Do they just, do they give it to us at the end of this? Do we put it in the system for public parking, but they own it? Do we pay them a lease payment? How do you picture that happening? And how do we know at this point that there wouldn't be a big enough difference in the way that we'd arrange that with both developers? That that would trump these other numbers?
Right, and Scott can correct me if I say this wrong. But what we will, we envision this being a lease-purchase agreement, which is kind of like buying something on contract. So for example, with the garages that we constructed with EMC, we entered into a lease-purchase agreement, paid them payments over time, and then ultimately, there's kind of a balloon at the end, and we ended up owning that garage. So probably a similar structure to that, Chris. And we will work with legal and finance to figure out what's going to be the best option. The options are going to be the same regardless of which developer you choose. The garages are kind of these freestanding structures. If we do a hotel on top of the Opus project, we would need to have a condo regime vertically that separated that out, and you'd have operating agreements with them. This would be operated just as it is now, as we would operate it. It would be our parking contractor that does the day-to-day maintenance, day-to-day operations of it. And it would be open to the public, open to Marriott guests. You'd have those same parkers who are in there today, Rouen tenants, and surrounding businesses would be the same customers could be in there. Did I answer your question?
That answers it in terms of process.
Okay. And I don't know what that lease purchase agreement will look like that we bring forward in a few months. It's good, we need to get Scott's team to get their hands on it and really determine the best financial strategy for us owning that garage. Replacing a garage is financially never easy. You're going to incur more, you're going to incur new debt and have the same parkers. So it's a struggle that we deal with all the time. Every time we replace a parking garage, you don't get a whole bunch of new customers. They're the same customers that were there paying before. It's a necessary evil of owning the parking system.
One other quick question. So the 794 parking spaces, will that decrease more to the 660 if it doesn't go forward with the hotel?
Yeah, we'd cut some spaces out of there probably for the hotel. And that's the other thing we'll do, sitting down with Jennifer and her team, is really figure-- it's not, you know, there's probably 80 or 90 spaces per level here. So it's not like you can cut 20 or 30 out. It's either you're kind of an all or nothing. What floor at a time? And so we're going to analyze these a little more closely to see exactly what we need to put back into the system. But these are pretty good estimates that they've given us here so far.
But when you take out the 86 for the apartments, then you're not too much difference between the two parking stalls.
Right.
So Matt, while the current ramp is demolished and before the new one opens, I've had two or three people ask me, "Where are people going to park?"
Yeah, the good news of the bad news situation we're in right now is that we have a lot of capacity in the system. That's the bad news, but that's a good time to replace a parking garage. There was a period when we were running at capacity, but when Wellmark and Nationwide and Wells Fargo Financial built their ramps, that took a lot of people out of our system and into the private system. So the Park and Ride, for instance, has enough capacity, has hundreds of spaces of capacity. The parking garage, the Ninth and Locust Parking Garage, which is immediately south of 801 Grand, we have a lot of, we have capacity in that ramp. We have capacity in the Fifth and Watson Powell ramp, which is the Lagoodie Tower ramp next to the Plex, the new Y. So within that region, plus you have some private parking ramps at the Partnership Building and at KEC, that within that, within two or three blocks of there, we have a lot of capacity. We'll work very closely with the Marriott to make sure that they, it's those Marriott customers. You came here for the wrestling tournament this year, and you knew where to park when you were staying at the Marriott. Now you come here next year, and the ramp's gone. Now what do I do? So we've got to work with them so that they can start to deliver that message to their customers that are regulars there that know that they're going to have to change their pattern. And then for our regular customers, our regular monthly office customers, so I know that a lot of the Rouen Tower tenants use that ramp. We'll be working, Jennifer and her team will be working individually with each of those groups so that their 30 employees at one company can all shift over to one of the other options. I'm not saying it's going to be convenient for everybody. There's certainly inconveniences when you tear down a parking garage. But we have time and we have a team that can work out a strategy and make sure we can put everybody someplace. So nobody will be displaced. They'll just have a new parking location for a couple of years, and we'll get them back.
So if you have plenty of capacity now, and as more people ride Dart and ride their bikes downtown, that's what we put the bike lanes in for, do you need a ramp to spit?
We need, parking is very district. It's very compartmentalized in location. When we look at the Fifth and Walnut ramp, we're probably not going to recommend that we replace all those spaces because that district and that location, exact location, doesn't have quite as much demand. This location, because you're surrounded by such big office towers that have a lot of vacancy today, it's been our role and the role of the parking system to make sure that parking's there so we can-- that's the tax base, kind of the investment you make is the parking, and the return on that investment is the taxes that are paid by all the office tenants. So right now, we have a lot of empty floors in Rouen Two, for example. We want to fill those up. We want to get, there's potentially hundreds of workers we can bring downtown in Rouen Two if we can get that space filled up. Those people, many of them, the ones that don't bike and don't ride the bus, will need a parking space. And the other-- bike and don't ride the bus, will need a parking space. And the other, the great thing that's happening out of the Principal project with the rehab of 801 Grand, is Principal currently occupies about two-thirds of 801 Grand with Principal employees. And as they start to move people around, Principal's going to take another, so right now, that top third of the building, you've maybe visited law firms in there, that top third of the building is third-party tenants. They're not Principal tenants. Principal's going to take the middle third of the building and have that be third-party tenants also, which is great. We can go out and grab great Class A office tenants and bring them downtown, but those customers are going to need someplace to park. And so this is all part of that strategy. And we do have a parking study that identifies what we, where we need that parking. It, it's zoned. And so we have some zones that have too much parking and some zones that have too little parking. Hopefully, you get it all spreader out, spread out in the end, and it works out okay. When I talk about having a lot of capacity, I really talk about the Park and Ride, which really, we all, we all know that there's a lot of spaces up there. And our goal is just to find some tenants who are, who are interested in, in that as a lower-cost alternative to some of the higher-cost ramps downtown.
Any further questions? Do you want to move on then, Matt, to your next item?
Move on. Okay. The second, second project is 420 Court Avenue. We had brought an original project to you from a developer-initiated proposal in December, and because there was additional developer interest expressed, the council directed, directed staff on the 23rd of December to seek other development concepts. So we received, within a quick six month, six-week turnaround, we received proposals from five developers. These are in no particular, these are just in alphabetical order. Hubble Realty with 160 market-rate apartments, 20,000 square feet of commercial space, a really great public-private courtyard. And there's a lot more to all these proposals. I'm just giving you three or four bullet points to, for the sake of moving it along. The second one was a joint venture between NAP Properties and Hy-Vee for a 35,000-square-foot full-service grocery store, Hy-Vee Market Grill, full-service restaurant anchoring, anchoring forth in court, and approximately 75 full-time, and that should say part-time, full-time and 128 part-time employees, 60 market-rate apartments above that. Mandelbahn Properties, 110,000-square-foot entertainment complex that included a 12-screen movie theater and potential complementary uses, as you see above. The Opus Group, again, with 180 market-rate apartments, a large resident courtyard space with a swimming pool, 15,000 square feet of commercial space along court. Insurance and Associates with 121 market-rate apartments in, in a couple of different configurations, and a 14,000-square-foot commercial space and 10,000 square feet of covered courtyard space to utilize by a farmer's market. So it really is some great architecture and great urban planning and design out of all of these teams in a short turnaround. We were really, really impressed with the caliber of teams and caliber of developments that came forward. And it, it really did make our, our, our choice difficult. You know, one thing that we, that we thought of a lot, and there's been some discussion on this over the last couple of weeks, is kind of what is the, what are the appropriate uses on Court Avenue? You know, we call it our entertainment district. I think the concept of an entertainment district has changed a lot since it was Court Avenue. It was originally dubbed the entertainment district. Entertainment in Des Moines has blossomed. It's changed a lot. The East Village has come about, and Woolies in the East Village, which is a great seven-day-a-week music venue, venues, is suddenly supplying a, a great entertainment location. The Sculpture Garden is a, and the 10th Street corridor, you would call it a different type of entertainment. The Des Moines Social Club is going now over in the old fire department on, on Ninth. So entertainment has changed a lot. And I think it's, it, there's this evolution that's happening in the Court Avenue area that it's not just an entertainment district. Diane, could you get the screen, the overhead? You know, one thing that we looked at is Court Avenue, instead of just being an entertainment district, it's really become a neighborhood, a really strong neighborhood. This is the site in red, and those dark boxes are all residential dwellings. Those are all pretty dense residential units. So you look at what Court Avenue is, and it's not just an entertainment district. I would say on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, it's a strong entertainment district. It's a, it's a, it brings a big crowd down. But the rest of the week, it's a neighborhood. And what do these neighborhoods, what do these neighbors need for amenities and services? So it's not always Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. On, on a Tuesday at noon, we don't think of it as an entertainment district. It's, it's a place for office users to get lunch. Right now, eight o'clock on a Monday, it's not an entertainment district. It's a place that people might want to stop and grab a cup of coffee. Or on, on a Tuesday after work, it might be a place where somebody needs to stop and grab their prescription at the pharmacy, or get a haircut, or anything that you need in this neighborhood. And so when we looked at that and started measuring these proposals, it was really hard to deny the, the Hy-Vee option. Diane, I'm back on the screen now. Thank you. So the strength of the Hy-Vee nap, the NAP Hy-Vee proposal was really hard to overlook, bringing those amenities to this area. And it's not, when you think of it, it's not just a grocery store. It's, this is a, a full-service store. It's a bank. It's a florist. It's a pharmacy. It's a bakery. You know, it's, it's all those things plus a grocery store. And so it really brought a service level and amenity level to the residents in this area. We have some next steps in moving forward on that proposal. Council's asked us to consider our recommendation tonight. And we'll work with NAP on urban design and traffic considerations. Obviously, just like the, probably even more so than what we saw on Seventh, this court proposal is very preliminary. They had just a few weeks to put it together. Their design team is OPN, which is a really good team here in Des Moines, and they're just a couple blocks away on, they're also on Court Avenue. So there's a big vested interest out of the OPN team to really get this right. And I know that they left a lot of concepts on the cutting room floor as they put this together and didn't have time to evolve all of their ideas. So we want to sit down with them and work on that urban design consideration and traffic considerations. We know that there is a lot of loading and unloading going on at a grocery store. And you don't want that happening on Court Avenue. You don't want Hy-Vee semis pulling up on Court Avenue and blocking a lane of traffic. So, and I know that the residents of the Fourth Street condos don't want a Hy-Vee semi idling outside their front door when they get up in the morning. So we need to work with Hy-Vee on how we get the, get those drop-offs to work. This is going to operate differently than a normal Hy-Vee, and, and Hy-Vee knows that. And, and I think they're going to be a great partner on this. One thing that's important to point out is that in this project, Hy-Vee's not a tenant. They're an owner. They're a co-owner. So in five years, there's not a lease that's going to expire, and Hy-Vee's going to vacate the store. They're, they're an owner of this with NAP. So that's a great partnership. We'll, we will, we'll refine the project financing and work with the team to identify and close any financial gaps. And we hope to get a development agreement to use just as fast as we can. One of the, one of the, I'm going to back up real quick. One of the urban design questions that we, and the, the blue letter gets into a little more detail on this. One of the, one of the urban design questions that we want to work with them on is we understand that a surface parking lot's going to be needed for a grocery store, but none of us really know exactly how big it needs to be. We would really like to see Fourth Street framed in some residential units, maybe some rowhouse units. So Hy-Vee and NAP are amenable to that. They're open to that. So we'll sit down with, with the Urban Design Review Board, city staff, and OPN, and talk about how to better treat Fourth Street to, to buffer that surface parking lot and also be respectful of the depot, but get some residential units to frame Fourth Street better so that when you're walking to the Science Center or to Hessen House, that you're not walking along a bunch of bumpers and streetlights so that you've got some, some better streetlight there. Again, these guys turned this around pretty short order. The, one thing that I didn't talk about is there is also a small parking structure that we requested in all of these developers' proposals, 150 to 200 units. So you see that on there also. We'll work to refine that. We know that that's a pretty active parking lot. We're talking to Polk County right now on what their needs are for court spaces, for court, court employee and juror parking and visitor parking. So there's a lot of coming and going on a, on a daily basis here. So there is some parking that we're going to have to replace in this area. So again, something that we'll work with finance and legal on and what the best strategy is. And maybe there's even a strategy where the county plays a role if there, if it's going to be a lot of their court users that are going to have, be using this space.
Chris Coleman?
Going back to our previous conversation, you can see the top of the Fifth and Walnut garage there.
Yeah.
We can move some people to that garage, at least whenever Google took this picture. The, the parking garage, is that also thought to, to be part of the public parking system? Or will that be privately run? Or is that undetermined now?
Undetermined. There's, there are different options.
My, I, I do believe that as you look at the redevelopment of where the Fifth and Walnut parking garage is going to be, and you look at the other vacant areas, the, the big mistake we could make is not planning for that garage to be big enough. And I, I don't have any data, but it sure seems to me that 150 stalls would be way too little to serve that, that area, especially in peak demand when we have farmer's market and other places. That, that, that empty surface parking lot holds a couple hundred cars right now every Saturday. And that's one of the important things that happens in our city every week.
I think what's shown right there now is about 125, approximately 125 surface spots and about a 200-space ramp. So they can go up and down, and we'll, we'll...
Is there commercial or anything in the first floor of the ramp?
No, there isn't. And we've looked at that from an urban planning standpoint a lot, and I've worked with Aaron Olson Douglas on that. Is, you know, it's, doesn't, there's not a lot of foot traffic there. It'd be a really difficult, I think it would be, I think a business would have a, have a hard time surviving on Fifth. Fourth is a different matter. Court, obviously, is a different matter. But when you turn that corner, I think a business would struggle. Now, you could, but I don't think you'd be able to charge a very high rental rate compared to what you could get on Court. It's something we can look at, but it's, it's, it's just, you know, when you get one block removed and you're off that beaten path, it'd have to be a destination-type use that people knew it was there and could get there. We, we don't want to, we don't want to create space that there's not a demand for.
Matt, let me just add, Mr. Coleman, to your question about the parking, no question, this is a high-demand area for parking. But if you even look at this image, the amount of surface parking that's in this area, that if it's alternative use times, if you have a peak for that parking during the day, and you're looking at an evening use, we had to be smart enough to figure out a way to maximize the use of that surface parking. And just to the south, off this image a little bit, is the Science Center parking garage, which is, at my, my understanding at this point, is not fully utilized. So there are some other parking resources. And your point's exactly right. You can't, there is a huge parking demand on this site. A number of businesses are dependent upon that. But at the same time, we're going to have to be smart enough to maximize the use of other parking resources. So what you don't want to do is overbuild that, particularly in an urban district like this. But we have a great team on this. And don't forget, you've got the Court Avenue garage just down the street. A couple blocks to the west of this image are the Mulberry facilities, the Walnut Street garage. So there is a lot of parking close by in this area, and, and we, we want to figure out a way to maximize the use of that parking. But not under, under supply either. So your points will take.
I got, I got one more thing real quick, just so I, this more has to do with the redevelopment of Fifth and Walnut.
Okay.
But I think it's important here, as we build out further west, I, I would really like to think about Principals with relationship to a Hy-Vee and development here for how we get the Skywalk to Court Avenue, not across Court Avenue. But we have it in the building down by Court Avenue Brew Pub, a couple blocks down. But we have it into the existing Fifth and Walnut, and we need to get that as a signature opening there. And that might be something that the, the NAP Hy-Vee people want some influence on is, and, and it might affect how they create front doors and that kind of stuff where we dump those people.
Right. We, you should get a job on the planning staff. We've had that same conversation, that when we redevelop Fifth and Walnut, we need to take that Skywalk corridor south, either through the alley or somehow through that building when we redevelop it, and put a nice, signature vertical access on that so that people can, can find it.
Christine?
I've got three items. I'd like to have you, let me just go through them, then you can just click, go through them. Could you talk, give us some his historical background on entertainment process that we've gone through back in the early 2000s? I really think that's important for people to understand why the, the lot was vacant for so many years and, because a lot of people don't know the history on that. Following up on Fifth and Walnut, I think we need to really have a deadline or a timeline as to how we're going to go forward with that development.
Okay.
Opportunity, and if we could have some discussion about that. And then the other question that there's a lot of discussion and chatter out in the community about would be, why did Hy-Vee with NAP select this site versus right on MLK? There's a feeling that MLK would be better suited for this as opposed to being, in quote, "an entertainment district."
Okay. I'll go back. So your first question was kind of the history of the site.
Correct.
And so that takes you back almost 15 years ago on the, the, what was the Centertainment, which was the theater, a large, large entertainment complex. That's why we bought the land and just financially, it was, you know, the time, the, the timing in the movie theater industry was, was bad, and, and there was a bankruptcy that really stalled that project. And it just, we, we went round and round and round for years on it, and, and finally had to pull the plug. It just...
Yeah.
Then we, then it sat as a surface parking lot for a number of years. And then about five years ago, we sent out a similar request for interest on the site. Housing interest was starting to pick up in downtown. We thought, well, this was a time to offer the site up on the market. And received a few good proposals. It got down to the, the final two, and we tried to merge a couple of the proposals together, and that was frankly not a good idea. And it may, it sounded like a good idea, but it just didn't work. And just couldn't financially make a, make a project come together. Then we decided to just wait and stop forcing the site on the market and let the market come to us. And as, as you've seen by all the development going on, the market is, is really doing well right now in a lot of different product segments. We thought, and so we get, again, we just sat and waited, and we were approached by Opus. And so we were responding to the market instead of us putting the, the market, the, the land on the market. So then when Hubble also expressed an interest in December, we said, okay, well, you know, let's, let's see. Maybe there is more than just Opus out there that, that wants to pursue this. And obviously, obviously there was just, and, and one thing I want to point out is, I'm going to sit down with all these developers, and if they have a concept that they want to consider moving to an alternate site, we'd love to work with them. I don't think you have to take those other four, four developers and, and push them away. I think we want, you know, they have some great, great concepts that we'd like to work with them throughout the downtown. Your question on why this site for Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee's been looking for a long time downtown, and they've looked up and down MLK. I think a weakness with MLK is that it becomes purely, not purely, it becomes more of an auto-oriented store, more of like a suburban store. Everybody's going to drive to it. It's, they still need auto traffic to drive the bottom line on this store and bring customers in. But as, as I showed you on the map, how dense this is from a residential standpoint, can we go back to the... These are the people, this is the core people that, that open, that, that, that Hy-Vee wants to, that wants to touch. It's, it's these, these residential units within a four-minute walk. I think suddenly, if you, if you came down to either the River Point West area, which eventually, eventually will be a dense housing location, or any sites that you might pick around here, you've suddenly got people in residential buildings, say the Liberty Building, that won't walk with a couple bags of groceries if they have to cross MLK unless it's an absolutely perfect 70-degree day. They're still going to get in their car, and once they go in their car, you've lost them. Why would they go to this Hy-Vee when they could go to Super Target or elsewhere? So I think it's...
Matt?
I think it's capturing...
Matt?
Yes.
Do you know how many residents there are within that inner circle?
We did a real, you've probably got at least 1,000 units, probably 15, probably 1,500 would be my guess.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And, and, and Hy-Vee has a representative here. If you'd like to get into that question in a little more detail.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Skip, did you have further questions?
Yeah. Could you explain why we're not following the same process on the Court Avenue site as the Seventh and Grand site?
We could slow down and do a formal RFP if, if that's the council's wish. I mean, we have different, two different ways of disposing of, of land at the city. One is a developer-initiated proposal, and one is if we issue an RFP. This came to us as a developer-initiated proposal with Opus, and that's how we were ready to move forward was with developer-initiated. About half the, probably more than half the projects we bring to you are developer-initiated proposals. So Mike Whalen's Hotel in the East Village was a developer-initiated proposal. Those are pretty common. We do about half and half developer-initiated RFP. There's no, if there's, if there's demand and a developer with a good project, we generally don't RFP the site, but we, we, it's, it's an, it's an option. But we, it's an option. Seventh and Grand was, we knew Seventh and Grand would be a complicated urban project, complicated design, complicated Skywalk system, and 50-plus million dollars. And we needed to RFP that site to go find a team that could do that. This site, because we already had a very qualified team in front of us with a really good proposal, that was why we brought the Opus, one Opus proposal forward, because we thought we had a team that understood what to do on Court Avenue. And we were surprised, we didn't think there'd be so much interest, and we were really happy with it. You know, maybe if, yeah, I mean, any one of these projects would be great on Court Avenue. So it actually makes our job kind of difficult to try and pick out which we think is the best.
Matt, let me just sort of add to Skip's question. We're at the front end of this process here on this project. So this still has to go through the contracting phase. I think that is subject to a formal developer-initiated solicitation process we had to comply with law. And even to get to that, you're going to go through hearings and meetings with Urban Design Review Board. And so there's going to be a lot more opportunities to come back here. There's going to be a lot more look-sees at this in the public, with the neighbors.
With a lot of neighborhood input, yes.
And at this table with you before it ever gets to the point that it will be an executed contract.
Well, I kind of have a question in that area, is that, you know, are we moving too fast? Yes, number of times you said they had rapidly put this together, and have you got the major questions answered, but now you need to do the rest of the details? Is that what you're trying to look?
Yeah, and if, you know, if we had, if we had put this out there, well, since we've been working on it since 2000, I mean, it's a question of are we moving too fast or not? I think we're just striking while the iron is hot. The market is telling us it's ready to build something here. And since we have so many good proposals, that tells me, tells me that our timing is right. So I don't think we're moving too fast. As long as the council likes the recommendation, and likes the NAP Hy-Vee proposal, we're definitely not moving too fast. And then, so I think we know that, Bob, I think we know that 30,000-foot view of what the projects are. Now we need to get into the details, work with the neighborhoods. It's going to be things like, the devil's in the details with these. Like I said before, it's that drop-off in deliveries for the grocery store. How does that work? It's integrating with the Four Street condos across the street. It's talking to the neighbors and seeing how they want the grocery store to function, and adding more housing on Fourth. And, yeah, I think it's, we're at the point now where I think it's a concept that we as staff are very comfortable with. And there's no denying what the drumbeat that we keep hearing from downtown residents as we become more of a residential core downtown, that a grocery store is an amenity they need. So we're hoping that will satisfy that demand and drive more residential units.
One last.
I think Carl had a question in here.
Matt, I think we could agree that most of the metro area is fairly car-centric area. What makes it think that people are now ready to either walk or bike to a grocery store, and they're willing to do so two or three times a week rather than just once-a-week trips to the grocery? Those are two big changes.
That's a big change, and that's a good question. It's a very valid question. For those residents within the four-minute walk circle, I think that's a pretty natural that they would walk to it. You know, a lot of them keep their cars at their corporate parking ramp. So if I work at Nationwide and I live at Kirkwood, you know, I'm probably going to leave my car in that ramp. And so that's very attractive for me to just walk and grab my groceries, rather than go out on Sunday afternoon and go out to Hy-Vee on Flewer or something. The, but people will still do that. It'll be hard to change some of those. And Hy-Vee could probably answer that question for you better than I can because they've studied the market and the demographics. But you'll see there's a reason they have a surface parking lot there. They know it's going to be hard to change consumer behavior, and they also want to have that surface parking there for people to run and grab groceries on their way home from work. Because not everybody has a grocery store right on their way home from work. So they know that they're going to need some surface parking there. But are we ready? You know downtown and residents better than I do even. I think we are, and Hy-Vee's convinced that we are. And they know the grocery business better than any of us.
I think Glenn Lyons, who's in the audience here, you know, made a point that he's seen people drive to a meeting four blocks away, which just drives me nuts that people would do that, but.
Bob, is Frank on the phone?
Yeah, we're going to get to him here. I cut Skip off. I think he had another question or comment.
I personally think we're moving too fast on this. About one-third of the comments I'm receiving from residents is that they like the idea of the Hy-Vee store there, but about two-thirds of them are saying they don't like it. Personally, I can blow a lot of holes in this project, but I can blow holes in others. And I think it's unfair to take on this one without having the other ones in front of us also. And the fact that Opus came to us about this project to start with, and now all of a sudden, we've got five projects, I think we need to take a step back, take a hard-line look at them. Is, will this really enhance that district as the absolute best project? One thing I look at on this one here is, if we go ahead with this project, it kills Four Street for the Farmers Market, and people need to realize that. The only entrance to this parking lot is off Fourth.
There's an entrance off Fifth.
Well, their schematic doesn't show one.
There's an entrance, there's an entrance off Fifth.
And I think this is the reason we need to step back, take a look at all the proposals.
I just, if I could just respond, my own view is this isn't going to kill the Farmers Market. And if it does, we would need to reconsider it. And I see Glenn out here and his staff, and, you know, they're conversing on that issue. But the point you make is a good one. But I don't think, and I got the developer here, they can come as well. That's a pretty strong statement to make about it.
Rick, I respect your opinion, but I also respect the 206,000 people living in Des Moines. And I think that to be responsible to all of our residents, we need to go through the same process on this. I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse on this.
I guess my, I've got to, let me respond to that first and then my last question. I look at the Opus project as Seventh and Grand. We still have all kinds of outstanding issues and assumptions that have been made. It's no different than what we've got on this project. Now, we would be developing, moving forward with Opus had we not received a call from a local developer that said, hey, we think that there's enough interest that we would like to submit a proposal. Lo and behold, we get several proposals. So I disagree with your statement, number one, because we hear, you made the comment that we need to strike while we can. We tried to do this back in 2000, the early 2000s with an entertainment district. And I'll never forget, Bill Knapp called me and said, Chris, you got to learn how to fold. He said, you're not going to get that done. And I remember that. And I'll tell you what, I have more calls and questions about grocery stores. In fact, I just got an email from the head of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. He said, please just build a grocery store so I don't have to answer the question anymore as to, where do you buy your groceries at? So I disagree with your comment. I believe that we've gone through a process. This is the very first step of a long process ahead, significant input, and this is something everybody in the city has an opinion on, whether they're going to use it or not. Nobody's going to do anything to hurt Farmers Market. I know in talking with people, that is a gem that they want to enhance and complement. They don't want to hurt it. And I have not heard anybody that's not willing to sit down and continue those discussions and deal with all of the different issues. So I think we've got some very strong corporate support for a major, significant investment that will really enhance the downtown.
Bob, I want to go on record. I didn't say it killed the Farmers Market. I said it killed it on Four Street with the plan that I have in front of me. Second of all, nobody's saying we don't need a grocery store downtown. We all know we do. Is this the absolute best location? Will this enhance the entertainment district? Is this the best enhancement that we can come up with? And I'm thinking we're rushing this too quick, and I think that we need to step back and take a look at all the proposals, go through the same process, narrow it down to maybe the three, two or three strongest ones, and then really get into the nitty-gritty of them like we did at Seventh and Grand.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and the other question was, could you go through and tell us who actually made up the team that reviewed these? I don't remember hearing.
Yeah, so I'll go back to the Seventh and, it's, on Seventh and Grand, it was myself, Phil Delfield, Aaron Olson Douglas, Scott Sanders, Roger Brown, and Larry McDowell from Legal, Jeff Brewer, and Jennifer Boak was our selection team. On this project, it was myself, Andrea Howard, Aaron Olson Douglas, Ryan Mofford from Planning, and Jennifer Boak, because we had a, we had a, the parking component of it also. So Jennifer in from Engineering.
Okay.
So those were the development teams, those were the teams that looked at them. All had different viewpoints and different experiences that they, different talents that they brought to the table. That's why we had such a broad group looking at them, because everybody brought a little different perspective. And we've also had numerous, on this site, numerous meetings and interactions with downtown residents and businesses, and Connie Wymer at the Depot, and a really great resident team from the Four Street condos. Roger Ferris is here today, who gave a lot of input and will help us and will work with them going forward. Because this is, if this is, if you choose this, if you select, approve the staff recommendation, part of the reason we bring these four is to be as transparent as we can, Councilmore, so that the public can, does have a chance to comment early on. So this is very early on. So we're just kind of throwing everything out there for you with our recommendation. And then on that, on the Seventh and, Seventh and Grand site, we had a lot of interaction with, certainly with Principal and some of the surrounding businesses on that area.
I don't want to overlook, the mayor's on the line. I wonder if he has any questions? Still there?
Bob, thanks. I have listened to this discussion, and I think that the council has put out a lot of good questions and asked, you know, for some reasonable information. I think that we need to really take a long, hard look at what we're doing, what the, what the street faces look like, what enhances these districts. You know, I look across the street north of the site between Fourth and Fifth and Court, and no, we've got a half of a block which is more than a block long. And, you know, we have to do something really significant there as well. I would wonder, you know, in asking the experts in the grocery business, I would think they would want to even consider that site because they could get access to the Skywalk, because there's a lot of residents now on the Skywalk and going to be quite a few more. And then I think it'd be a huge advantage, especially for a number of those people that use the Skywalk and could go get their groceries. I mean, it'd be a great opportunity. And then, you know, look at how all those pieces fit together. The important piece at Seventh and Grand, I think we've heard a lot of hypothesizing about what could happen there. I just think that we need to know a little bit more, other than maybe a hotel, maybe some residents and some parking spaces. And I believe that certainly the developer could do this, and I think that was a good thing to look at. But I think we've got some other folks that have the ability to do it as well. And I think that, quite frankly, we ought to receive and file and get a few more questions answered.
Well, I think the receive and file would be tonight at council meeting, not.
Exactly.
Not in a workshop, yeah.
Exactly.
Any further questions, comment? Matt, did you want to make anything on that? Okay, well, yeah, Chris.
We're going to have a choice tonight about, you know, I guess, the speed at which we go about this. It would probably be helpful that we have in writing a clear understanding of the kind of process that you would go through under the recommendation in terms of how do we get these other questions answered? How does, how do we, you know, what is the current plan? You know, on one hand, I, you know, I think we can, that we know that a broader RFP, or talking to many developers, could get us more information about several options. But does this, does the plan you're recommending, what are the specific steps and exactly what we do to make sure that we get this input on this project? If we follow the recommendations, so that we can balance the two.
Matt, thank you very much. Very informative, and we'll look forward until tonight's council meeting. Next, I have Candy on the street use process.
Good morning, Mayor Protim and members of the City Council. My name is Candy Rindell, Assistant to the City Manager. And what you see on the screen right now is a picture of a typical Saturday in Des Moines, actually. It's not, this is the start of the 2013 IMT Des Moines Marathon. Last August, council asked that staff work with the East Village event sponsors, partners, and DARTs to review, I have to do two things at once here, to review our procedures for reviewing and proving street closures related to downtown events. And so we formed a committee, and these are the members of the committee. And there's several of them that are here in the audience. If you'd like to stand up or raise your hand that you're part of the committee. Thank you for being here. So the street use team was created in 1999 as a one-stop shop for special event organizers to come and obtain a street use permit from the city. These are the current members of the street use teams. You can see we have city staff and also community members, representatives from the community, such as DART and Downtown Community Alliance, and Operation Downtown, and the CBB. So we started tracking events back in 1999 when we instituted the street use event. So as you can see, from 1999, we started out with 37 events. In 2011, we had 201 events. 2011 was a caucus year, so that's why there are several events that happened. However, in 2013, we had a record number of 223 events. We had 22 parades, 40 timed events, which is your runs and your walks. We had 83 commercial street closures. Those are your concerts, your markets, your festivals. And then there were 78 block parties in the neighborhoods. Every single one of those requires an application to be submitted, and then we submit the permit once the application is approved. So here's our meeting agenda for our street use meeting that's coming up on Wednesday. And as you can see, every 15 minutes, there's someone coming in to talk to us about their event. Usually in February, March, April, May are busiest times. We start at 8:30 in the morning, and sometimes we go until 12, 12:30 because there's so many events that we have to talk about. So here are current fees and requirements. This is for a commercial street closure. This doesn't, it's not for the residential block parties. We have a $100 street use application fee. If you submit it, if your event is 90 days less than the out, there's a $50 late fee. We require a petition, and it has to have 51% approval. We don't have, we don't require a petition for parades or timed athletic events that last less than an hour. So your 5Ks, your walks for charity, things like that.
Are your approvals of businesses? Who's approving?
Businesses and residences. We require a diagram of the area or the route of the run-walk. We require certificate of insurance. Parades are exempt from that, according to our legal department, and risk management. We also have in our ordinance that no two events can be within 1,000 feet of each other without having approval from the one event organizer that got their application in first. And the reason behind that was during the Des Moines Arts Festival several years ago, people were setting up right outside of the festival itself. And so they were taking, well, not advantage, but they really were taking advantage of the art festival without having to pay the fees and to be a part of that. So that's why we instituted that. We also provide a traffic control plan, or what we call a police order, as provided by our Traffic and Transportation Department. And that's for, so the event organizers know where to set up the barricades, what type of barricades they need, or where the cones need to be set up. And then the applicant is required to attend a street use meeting. And that gives an opportunity for the applicant to be able to answer or ask questions of all the city staff at the table and vice versa, so they don't have to be calling up every single department to ask the questions. So this is just a quick snapshot. So this is just a quick snapshot of staff time that is not covered by any fees. And these are just, you know, for the top four departments. There's other departments that, that work on street use itself, but for instance, in the Police Department with two personnel, one of them being Sergeant Beersley in the back, he spends about 50% of his time on, on events. And so just a quick calculation, just for these four departments, there's about $114,000 that are not recovered for staff time that's, that's spent on, on the events. We did a quick research on what other cities do. Kansas City seems to be the closest to us as far as fees and petition and requirements. And as you can imagine, you know, no, no cities, every city is different. Minneapolis, their fees are dependent upon the size of the, of the event. The smaller the event, the smaller the fee, the larger events, the more expensive the fee. Their petition requirement is 75%. They also have time restrictions. You can't start an event until 10 o'clock in the morning, and you have to end it at 10 o'clock at night. With us, you can start at 7:00 in the morning, and on weeknights or weekends, you can go until 12:30 in the morning. And then Cedar Rapids was a little interesting. They don't have a fee, but they bill for the direct service. So if you have a traffic control plan from Traffic and Transportation, or from, you know, police service, or from fire, then they directly bill those, the event organizers for, for that service. They don't require petition, but they require that there's, there's notification to people that are impacted. And here, what we do with our police services, if you have a, a commercial street use, the first $250 of police service is comped, and then the event organizers are required to pay the balance of that. And what Cedar Rapids does is they have a pot of money that they use for police overtime, and it's like $25,000, and the event organizers can apply up to $5,000 for a grant to help defray the, the police cause. So these are just a few of the recommendations that, that the committee came up with. The first one is to increase the street use application fee from $100 to $250, and that is to align with the trail usage permit fee. To use the trail system for the city, it's, it's $250. We just wanted to be in line with them. And then also to implement some sort of administrative fee to recover the costs that I mentioned before that are not covered, and that would not exceed the actual direct costs. And so it's not like we'd be, you know, making any revenue off it, it would just be to cover the cost. And then increase the late fee depending upon when the application is submitted. So if you're 60 days out from your event, it would be $50. If you're closer to the event, 45 days, it'd be 75, 30 days would be 100. And then if it's less than 30 days, our recommendation is that the application be denied, because that just sends staff scrambling to get that done. The only one that, you know, unless it's a presidential campaign the night before the election, we probably would not deny it. That happened to us a few years ago. Then increase the... And then increase the petition approval percentage from 51 to 60%. And then increase that buffer zone that I talked about from 1,000 foot to 1,800 feet, which is about three blocks. And then the approval would be needed by both the city and the event organizers, because we had an issue last year in the East Village where we had two events that were right next to each other, because the one event organizers gave approval to the other one, and it was a traffic nightmare. So we don't want, we don't want, we want to prevent that from, from happening in the future. And then for the smaller walks and runs, instead of putting them on the street and tying up traffic, and we would require that they use the trail system, because our trail system, the trail is wide enough to accommodate the smaller runs and walks. And then also, we provide encourage suggested routes and closures that really are less impactful on, on the bus routes and the residences and, and the businesses. There are times that the, you know, event organizers will come in and say, I really want this route, and, you know, Chip and, and others, Mark here from Traffic will look and say, geez, if we did it this way, it'd be a lot less impactful and a lot less police. And so we do, you know, look into it to make it, make sure it's a, it's a win-win situation for both. So I'm passing the baton to Jennifer Bohak now, and she'll talk about the traffic control recommendations.
Could I touch on your part just a little bit?
Sure.
We talked about this a little bit the other day, but, you know, in the parks, there's a fee to use the parks for events, but Ben can exempt them from that fee if it's a direct benefit to the city. One that comes to my mind is the car show at Union Park. 100% of the profit goes to the carousel, so Parks and Rec has historically said no fees to be charged. Another one I'm thinking about is one we talked about the other day, the Rendezvous River View. And they black off one block of the street on the north side. However, all the profit that they're gaining from that is being saved to build a stage for the city down on River View Park. I think we need to consider some way that we can exempt people when they're doing something that's a direct financial gain for the city of Des Moines, because it's, in a way, robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Sure.
Thank you, Candy, Jennifer Bohak, City of Des Moines Traffic Engineer. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the changes that we have currently made. So we started to review the street use process and then some proposals for some additional changes. So one of the things that has come up is meter bagging. How do we make it so that we can bag enough to notify drivers where not to park for upcoming events, but also to not be so impactful to those shop owners and other businesses that need that parking in front of their business? So one of the things that we looked at was kind of changing the use of one of the signs. We were using the sign on the left that has the green and the red, has a lot of verbiage, was, we felt was maybe confusing to the parker. And so we're switching more to our standard sign on the right. It would simply say, no parking, say, beginning Sunday. It would be rubber banded onto the parking meter, and therefore the parking meter stays open for use Friday and Saturday. The event organizer would pull them after the event on Sunday, and parking would be then allowed back on Sunday. So just gives us some flexibility. We did try this at the end of our event season last year, and it worked quite well. We had full meters in the area of the Western Gateway and the East Village up until the event. I believe it was the Des Moines Marathon in the fall. So it seemed to work quite well. So that's a change we've already instituted. So as Candy mentioned, we went through and we looked at what other cities do as part of this process. And one, one thing we kept seeing that was pretty consistent is that most other cities don't provide traffic control barricade plans for these events. Those events provide the traffic control barricade plan to the city, the city reviews it, and then approves it. Some cities require an actual engineered plan stamped by a state engineer. Some require just the event, event barricade provider to supply it. Some require just the event organizers to supply the barricade plan. So that, a lot of that unrecovered cost comes in that traffic control barricade plan preparation that we've been doing. So that's one thing we're going to be looking to change. And so if an event organizer, they're new, they come in and they need a traffic control plan for their event, and they would like the city to prepare that, we would be looking to recover the cost, the direct costs associated with that. We will require traffic control plans like we currently have for parades, runs, festivals, and non-standard block parties. What we plan to do for block parties, your kind of routine neighborhood block parties have a standard, here's the two barricades, or a few barricades you need at each end. And so that would be kind of a standard template, so it wouldn't be additional costs in the neighborhood for those types of things, unless it was some, some odd block party that expanded over several blocks and things like that. And the other thing we plan to do too is put together a template of, I guess, sample barricade plans. If you're closing one block, if you have a run in this area, that would say, here's the type of signage you need. So that gives that tool, that kind of workbook, for those event organizers to put together that traffic barricade plan and submit something to the city. We're also going to have a better review of those plans. You know, proper traffic control barricading during these events is a really important thing to keep traffic moving safely around the events, both pedestrians and vehicles. So we want to make sure that we have good barricading. So we're going to be looking to have a closer review. We've been doing this informally, where an event organizer comes in with the Police Department and sits down with members of my department, and then members of the organization that's having the event. But we're going to look to formalize that process, where you have not only your street use meeting, but if you have a traffic control barricade plan need, you would also go to this kind of subcommittee for this extra review. Again, we're looking for a minimum 60 days in advance. It gives us adequate time to prepare a good plan, gives them enough time to talk to their barricade company and get the barricades out that they need. So, and then another thing we're going to be looking at is that fee review for barricades. As we look around, the barricades that Public Works provides, the costs that they charge compared to the costs that a barricade company would charge for a similar barricade, there is a difference there. Same with all the meter bagging that we do. We don't recover a lot of our costs associated with that. So we're going to be reviewing those fees to see if anything really needs, needs to change in regards to that as part of this process moving forward. And then I want to talk a little about some of our notification recommendations. This has been a big concern that we have heard, is how to properly notify for these events. So you have these event organizers are now going to be required to provide flyers with maps, closure times, and contact information to the property manager to distribute to tenants in the buildings. Right now, the petition process is the property manager signs. They could have 40 tenants in the building. Sometimes the tenants aren't getting notified. So the event organizer will actually supply the flyer to pass out to each one of those tenants. The events will also be placed on the city's website by neighborhood. So if you're interested in what's going on in your neighborhood, you can go ahead and pull that up. Both pending and approved, right now, we have several events, as Candy mentioned, that are in the future and in the works. So go ahead and get those out now to those neighborhoods and let them know what could be coming the next couple of months. And then you also can sign up to be part of an email distribution list and get those lists of upcoming events directly. And also, if you'd like to sign up to get a push notification on your smartphone related to events in your area. The other thing we're going to do too, this has come up a little bit, is you have, you know, what we call your hard closure area, and then what we call the soft closure area. It may be that the event's taking place, let's say, between third and fourth, but we have to close at second and fifth. And so how do we make sure those businesses and areas in that soft closure are still getting notified? Because they are still impacted. Technically, the street's open, you can get around the barricades, but it could impact their businesses a bit while that, that block is closed in that area. So how do we make sure that that full area of, of that event or that event impact is notified? So those are some changes we're making there. And with that, invite Candy up and we'll answer any questions.
Question?
Yeah.
First-time events. You know, one of the things I think that we, or was there discussion about first-time events? And should we be charging them maybe a larger fee for that first time? Because it's, you know, those are the ones that we tend to have problems with. It's when they're coming in and they don't go back and do the cleanup or whatever. So that would just be one thought. Secondly, the difference between a for-profit and not-for-profit entities. I think there should be a different fee schedule for for-profit entities, because we're seeing more of the for-profit groups coming in and doing events. So was there discussion on that? And then the last item would be DART. We talked about, we're seeing Elizabeth here. We talked about staff time and what the cost was for the city, but it's also a significant cost to DART. A very dramatic cost, probably more so, because they've got to reroute the buses and do different things. So how, there's absolutely no recommendation. Was there discussion about a way that we could, if we have to completely relocate a DART route, that there would be additional charges or some way at, looking at compensation for that? So those are my comments.
We, to talk about DART, yes, we did discuss that. And we, as the city, if it affects a DART route, wouldn't be able to charge the event itself. That would be up to DART to recruit their, their costs.
But could we link that?
We could, we have, you know, we have a representative from DART at the street use meeting. One of the things that we're very cognizant of now is the new DART facility. So for instance, Dam to Dam last year ran down Grand Avenue and cut off the north-south part of the city, you know, for three to four hours in the morning. Farmer's Market was going on. DART was totally affected by, by that. So we met with, with the Dam to Dam representatives, and we asked them if they would change their route so it wouldn't impact the DART facility, and they graciously, I'm looking at Carl, because he's down the committee, has graciously done that. So the, the Dam to Dam is, will not be a 20K this year, it'll be a half marathon, because they had to add some distance. So there's, and, and that really was the big one, I'm looking at Elizabeth. And the other ones, we tried to put, that are not on bus routes. They may have a couple of blocks that they would have to, to reroute, but we, you know, trying really hard to work with DART. I'm sorry, what were your other two questions? I started with the last one.
Profit versus not-for-profit and first-time events.
First-time events, I mean, that's why we, we have the street use meeting, because they'll, we have some first-time events that come in and they have no clue. And we say, you know, do you have a cleanup plan? You know, what are your plans for this, what are your plans for that? We've also talked about maybe doing a bond on an event, so if, you know, like a $500 bond. So if they don't come in and clean up, we keep that money. So that's something else that has been, that has been, that has been talked about as well. And for-profit, for nonprofit, I have to look to legal about that, because I don't, you know... And I know what you're, because we had like the color run come in. It was 30,000 participants for that, $45 a person. They made one and a half million dollars, and I think they gave probably 10,000 of it to charity.
I know, that's a problem.
And so that...
Scramble.
Yeah. And we talked about even having, you know, a dollar per participant fee that would come back to the city to recruit those cause. But Chris, Chris Burge from, you know, the marathon said, you know, I've got 10,000 participants, I'd be writing you a check of 10,000, but the direct cost from the city to me is only like 5,000. So, you know, and would we want to do that to nonprofits? You know, if we do it for the for-profits, you know, I'd have to look to legal for, for that.
Can we have a two-tier fee structure?
It, it's possible to have a two-tier fee structure. The problem is that the fees, as we've, we all know, the, the fees can't exceed the costs that are charged. Then you get into a problem if the, as to why the difference in fees exist. And to the extent those become any kind of content-based charges and fees under the First Amendment, then we've got a real problem. And so that's why we've been very careful about that particular topic. We'd be happy to get you more information on that. But it, it's not, not as simple as just saying, well, nonprofits will charge a lower amount.
Candy, can, or Jennifer, either one, talk about events, closing East Locust Street and encouraging events to other streets?
Sure, we, as you can well imagine, the state Capitol is the backdrop on Locust Street. So a lot of event organizers like to have that as their backdrop. And I know that it's very impactful to the businesses in the East Village, especially on a Saturday. That's their biggest day, that's their biggest day of the week. And so we've been encouraging, like I said before, encouraging people to go to Walden Street. Lot less businesses, a lot less impact on DART, especially if, even if it's on a Friday for, for the D-line and things like that. So we are looking at shifting away from Locust Street for quite a few events.
Right.
Now, there are some runs that will come down Locust Street, and then they'll be gone. So it's probably like a 10, 15-minute type of closure, but they're, the stationary ones, you know, we do encourage them to look elsewhere.
Right, and so, so new events might have some preferred routes if they, they're, they're already measured and certified on the distance. These are running events or charity runs, which are actually more like a walk, but...
Right.
That will be a five or 10K, and using the Principal River Walk, a lot more.
Correct, correct. Any other questions?
Questions and comments? If, if I heard you right at the beginning, we have a net loss of $114,000.
That's just with four departments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let me just preface my comments by saying, that $114,000 is a great investment by the city of Des Moines. I would say that 95% of our residents would rather have those 200 events than the $50 million parking garage at Seventh and Grand.
Sorry, Matt.
And that's, and, and so we can't view these as enemies of the city. I would venture to say that a huge percentage of the people that come to Des Moines from the suburbs around the state are coming for one of these events. It's, it's really good for us. And I hate it when we approach things as, how do we deal with this problem that we have? These 200 events are maybe the greatest thing that happens in Des Moines. And if we lost one of these, if we found out next week that 50 of these went to Johnston and West Des Moines, we would have a blue ribbon panel trying to figure out, how do we get them back in downtown Des Moines or in our neighborhoods that drive customers? And so that's number one. Number two, I'd like to know, for each of these bullet points, what, what is it that we're really going to generate? Like raising the fee from $100 to $250 for just the application? For many of these organizations, sounds unbelievably punitive. But if I do the math, it's going to generate $14,000 of 114 that we're losing. Like it just, that to me does- Like it just, that to me doesn't make sense that we would one and a half times our current rate and put up that barrier from the first second that somebody's thinking about doing an event here. So, and, and it only dents the problem. So I'd like to know what that is, and I'd like to know by, by events, which ones are we losing the most amount of money on? So if we can extrapolate that we lose 114,000 in these events total, are we losing 80 or 100, I mean, does the 80-20 rule work here? Is most of our loss in five or 10 or 20 events out of the 200? And if they are, let's fix what's wrong with those and not put a hammer to the whole system that is going to end a lot of small events. So I'd like, I'd like that information. Here to me is the big problem, and the manager and I have talked about this a lot. Our community generates millions of dollars in hotel-motel taxes. Most of it goes to the CVB or Bravo. The organizations that those two entities support are often the sponsors or the hosts of many of these 200 events. That's who should be paying for most of these costs, especially the big ones that are driving so much cost. And we have to find a way in those agreements. We've talked about it before. But between those two groups, we're giving them $3 million a year. We're talking about losing $100,000? Let's go fix this with them and not take a hammer to the 300 kids that want to walk through Beaverdale on a Walkathon, which I organize.
Can I just comment on what Mr. Coleman said? If, if, we're going to talk about the budget in a second, but, but one of the, one of the year two budget adjustments that we're talking about is the very point you're taking. I just want to connect the dots here. Candy's point that our staff costs that we lose is $114,000 per year. One of the ways to solve that, and one of the things that's identified in, in our budget proposal for you, is to do exactly what you talked about, Chris, which is to work with the CVB, look at those hotel-motel revenues as a fund.
And Bravo.
And Bravo.
And Bravo, to help offset these kind of expenses. I, I just want to add one other thing to it. I, I really appreciate your comments about, it's a balancing act between wanting to maintain these events here, but minimize the adverse impacts on the community. One of the things that, that Candy and I have talked about a lot with these is, when the event's over and you, and you come back downtown on Monday morning and you see it all cleaned up, you really feel good about it. But sometimes when it's not all cleaned up, it, it's, it's not so good. So Candy mentioned in her comments, the idea of some sort of bond or surety requirement that could be placed upon the event organizer to make sure that they get out and do the cleanup. I, I happen to think is very appropriate. And as you get more residents downtown and they're here 24/7 and they're walking around the downtown on Sunday morning or something after a big event and you see garbage all over, it's very deflating. So that's one thing that I will encourage all of you to, to kind of focus on. But Chris, your point about wanting to make sure we don't snuff out these events, the big and the small, I think is important. So it is this balancing act. You want to minimize the adverse impacts on businesses and residents here, but you don't want to kill the events. And maybe in the, in the long term, what you end up with are two or three very specific sites where these events always locate, and you pick those locations in such a way that they don't, they don't have the adverse impact. So there's maybe a way to do this that works even better in the future.
Very good.
I want to send on the committee, thanks for all the work they've put into this. This is an extremely hard subject to deal with, and I agree with everything Councilman Coleman has said and with what the city manager said. I've got one suggestion. One worry would be the neighborhood block parties. And some neighborhoods are flush with money and some don't have any funds at all. I would suggest on barricades, giving them the option of driving down to Public Works and picking up the barricades themselves, signing them out, and then when they return them, if they're returning in good shape, not busted up, that's the end of it.
And, and a lot of cities do do that. They, you know, for a $30, $30 deposit, you come get the barricade, when you return in good shape, they get your $30 back, so.
I'd like to end with one thing. This is aftermath presentation in my presentation, just a little thing here. We have the map behind us.
Downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, we've got the budget, operating and capital budget. This is a follow-up from past budget presentations. And as you can see, we're running way late, way, way late, and we still have public comments got.
Great. Morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go page by page through our budget document. How am I supposed to follow this up, right? Actually, I don't have a presentation for you this morning, so I can be very brief. But I think it is helpful that you understand the action items that are in front of the council both tonight and two weeks from tonight. There are a couple additions you're going to see here, but for the most part, it's the typical budget process. So tonight, there are setting of hearings. That first set, you have the current year 14 budget amendment that needs a hearing, the 15 original budget as well, which we've, we've spoken about quite a bit. The capital improvement plan has a hearing to it. And then lastly, we have the pre-levee process. This is where we have a bond issue that we need to issue later this spring. It will have a debt payment that comes due still in fiscal year 15. And so our fiscal year 15 budget needs to include that debt service payment, but we don't have the authority until we go through this process of pre-levee. So it's a, it's a hearing on that debt that is for our CIP, all the projects to fund those for the next year. So those are the hearings that are on tonight's agenda. And then also, there is an item to then publish, this is also standard, the summaries of both the amended current year 14 as well as the new 15's budget. One-page summary in a newspaper that needs to occur 10 to 20 days before the approval. So that will occur this Thursday, February 27th, we'll have each of those one-page summaries. And I should remind you that for the fiscal year 15, that publication will show a 41-cent increase to the tax rate. That preserves for the council the ability to have that tax rate raised if the franchise fee were to fail on, on March 4th. And so again, we're just preserving that ability and that option for the council. The final decision will be in front of you on March 10th. That is when you have a similar list of holding the hearings as well as the approvals of the amended budget, the new budget, and the CIP. So I've gone through that fairly quickly, but I think I'm going to pause for just a second. Does that make sense? I, I wanted to present that as the new council members as well. Okay? There are two items on here you'll also see that are new. We have a $250,000 reserve, if you will, that was set aside for the housing department, and that can go away. And so that will be a separate action item on the 10th of March, as well as with our new COPs grant, we will, we will start to add our match as a committed fund as well. And so again, with a limit on time, I can answer additional questions offline if, if you have those for that. So now I want to really open it back up. I've had several questions come through from individuals, the council, but if there are any questions you wanted at this point, I'll try and answer them.
Questions from the council?
We, we would very much appreciate it. If you do have questions, line items, anything large or small about the budget, let, let us know sooner rather than later so we can be prepared to respond prior to the hearing on the 10th.
You did get my email.
I did. In fact, the questions that I've had from several of you, well, we'll get answers back to you next day or two.
Perfect.
Scott, one thing that, that I didn't ask in my meeting with you last week, I, I don't really see how the city can whack the Parks and Rec and library budgets anymore. That, those are the two key departments that people, when they think about quality of life, are really important to Des Moines. So is it time that the city look at some type of regional authorities?
Okay.
And just take it out of the, I mean, it's working in other cities, whether those are regional libraries, regional trail authorities, or regional Parks and Rec. I, I, with, without having, oh, a referendum or increasing taxes, I don't know how you could do anymore.
Okay, so you're looking for a broader solution potentially?
Yes, I may have those conversations started. I know that there's, you can hear conversation in coffee shops and such, or, you know, knowledge that, that, for example, regional libraries work elsewhere, but is it something at, at least worth discussing?
Scott, Frank County, can I speak to that real quick?
Sure. Yes.
Carl, I think you, you point out something that, that I know a, a number of us have been working on for a really long time. It's a frustrating experience. We are trying to speak with our, our neighbors about doing a lot of things regionally, and parks and libraries are two of the issues that we brought up in a number of places, including the MAC. And we're going to keep working on it, and, and I think that, that you underline that a, an issue that the whole region needs to address, and certainly, Des Moines is, is the, the center, and, and quite frankly, the hub of, of the park system. So I think we ought to continue doing it, and any, any help that you can give us with, with neighborhood speak and regional speak is, is helpful because I think that, that some of those things are hard to, to regionalize because a lot of folks think of them very parochially, parochially. So thanks, let's keep, we'll keep working on it. Good point.
Other comments? Thank you. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Scott. It's now time for public comment. Come on up, Justin.
Justin Mandelbaum from Mandelbaum Properties. I'll be quick on my time, I know we're running late. It's regarding 420 Court. Want to first thank you for all your hard work and your careful deliberation. I'd like to make three points. The first one's regarding the entertainment aspect of Court Avenue. I moved there after living 10 years in Manhattan, Tokyo, and Philly. We chose it because it was billed and promoted as an entertainment district, and after living there for three and a half years, and I'm probably the only developer here who's actually lived there in the last decade, we found out it, it's not really an entertainment district as it's promoted, it's really just a bar scene. And when, when we talk about, well, there's, there's Woolies in East Village, and there's a social club in Sculpture Park, is, is an entertainment district really important? I think we're selling ourselves short to get rid of the vision that we originally had planned for the district. And if you, if you look at having an entertainment complex anchored by a movie theater, you really are giving yourself an opportunity to transform it into a true entertainment destination that can be recognized across the Midwest. And having a well-defined and well-developed entertainment destination is what makes our city more attractive to current residents, prospective residents, like my friends who have all moved away, and visitors as well, like all, all the new visitors we intend on having with the Convention Center Hotel. And I don't think it's a fair comparison to back up to 1998 where the first movie theater was proposed for downtown. It was simply the wrong project and the wrong timing. It was a 20-screen movie theater, it was way too big for the market, it was anchored by Barnes and Noble, which, you know, if you look at their stock price starting in 98, and that's six months after it was proposed, the company literally lost half of its value and is worth even less today. And from a movie market perspective, you had the Carmike Win Song in Southridge that opened in 1998, the Two Fridley Theaters that opened up in 99. So it was a terrible time for a movie theater to come into the market in general, and also, you know, anyone won't deny that 1998 Court Avenue is nothing what it is today. The second point I'd like to make is the location of the grocery store. I think, we can all agree that downtown needs a grocery store. It was mentioned earlier today that it was picked as ground zero because there's 1,500 units or so within a four-minute radius, and I think it would be a fair question to ask, what portion of the demand for the grocery store actually comes from residents who are walking there as opposed to foot traffic? My guess is it's a small percentage, and there are many other locations that would have similar four-minute walking radius to 1,500 units downtown. Most people are going to drive, that's the kind of market we live in. The 70,000 workers downtown, Meredith and Principal, Nationwide Principal, I don't see them walking to the grocery store. And if they do drive, you're going to have a, a, a traffic issue. Those, those roads aren't designed to accommodate heavy traffic, they're all one-lane in each direction, Fourth Court and Fifth. It's not designed for that. And probably more importantly, you know, can't handle the trucks, and, you know, we mentioned, well, you know, we got to figure out, we don't want semis parked on the road, and that's fine, but, but the bigger issue is really the, the safety. The dock access is off Fifth, that has two-lane traffic, one lane each direction, has two bike lanes and pedestrian foot traffic. And if any of you know my friend, B M Lee, who works at the World Food Prize Building, she literally got hit by a truck in East Village in 2012, and it was because she was at a stop sign. She was walking because the truck was right there, and the truck was too tall and literally couldn't see her. So I, I think there, there's definitely a need for grocery store downtown, it's just a question of where. And then the third final issue that I'll just touch on real briefly, Chris Coleman mentioned it earlier, I wish he was here, is about parking, and specifically with the courts. Courts have mentioned that they need at least 300 spaces between Fifth and Court and Fifth and Walnut. And this is really an ideal site for parking because you can accommodate the court traffic during the day and the entertainment traffic during the nights and weekends. Our plan efficiently uses the site because we use the entire site for parking and get 200 cars on a level, so we could easily accommodate up to all 300 spaces in that sum. So, thank you.
Thank you, Justin, very much. Other comments? Seeing none, thank you everybody for being here. It's been a longer-than-anticipated meeting, but we'll be back here this afternoon for the council meeting at 4:30. Thank you.
But at 4:00 for housing, right?
Yeah, for housing, yeah.